And at this point in time, we will have third reading of Bill 2012-76.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21 and Chapter 35 of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by creating noise generation regulations.
Okay, follow-up by, I guess, our sponsor. Now we'll go into debate of Bill 2012-76. Ralph?
Yes. Well, I'm glad we're bringing this to the floor tonight so we can debate it and have a vote tonight. The -- I've heard plenty of testimony that convinces me even further that we need to have this new ordinance. As we've -- as I've pointed out before, the existing ordinance is quite outdated. And we're going to -- we need to have numbers. We need to have decibel numbers, which are clear and specific as this ordinance that we're debating tonight does have. The old ordinance, as you know, was just arbitrary and very subjective. And in fact, it was so subjective and so arbitrary that in the commercial area on Ash, there have been many, many phone calls, as Mr. Brownstein has said, you know, complaining about the music. This ordinance will help that. This ordinance will help that particular situation, and also this ordinance will help put Jeff City in a position for the next many, many years by replacing the old ordinance. The -- a lot of time went into this by staff. Drew especially has spent a lot of time on it. Roger Schwartz has spent an awful lot of time on it. A lot of -- Drew has -- Drew and Roger both investigated a lot of ordinances from other communities. Roger's been all over town taking decibel readings from all kinds of businesses and all kinds of uses and all kinds of noise to find out what the numbers represent so that we would try -- so that we could try to be -- come up with as good an ordinance as possible with the best numbers as possible that can be applied throughout the community. I can't tell you that it is going to -- I can't tell you that this one ordinance and the numbers we have are going to be the same numbers or the same ordinance we have in five years or 10 years. I would imagine it gets updated, just like the old ordinance got updated many, many times over. But I do believe that this is the place to start, and I believe that the time is now to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other debate by council members? Raise your hand, please. Dr. Pope?
I have some technical questions. Drew, I can think of two instances in the Third Ward. Let me preface this by saying the specific problems that exist on Ash Street, because of it being a mixed neighborhood, makes this resolution very difficult. I'm thinking about an issue in the Third Ward where a major commercial area is just one property line to a residential area. And for instance, all of the property at Capitol Mall would be considered 85 decibels daytime, and until -- and at 10 o'clock, 10 p.m., it could -- it would be 80 decibels. Now, right across the property line, all of the eastern side is residential. So the way this is written, at 10 p.m., if the noise is 80 or 70 -- at 80 below -- 80 in the commercial area, but the people right across the line, it is above 55, then are the people in the commercial area in violation of this ordinance?
Yes. And the reason is because it's -- the point of measurement allows from five feet off the property line, or the point of complaint. So if the point of complaint has then moved into the residential area, they could be on the --
So if the complaint comes from a residential area in proximity to the commercial area, and it's over 55 at night, they -- the commercial district would be in violation?
I believe that to be the correct analysis.
Okay. Now, that being -- that's a perfect world.
Sure.
That's perfect. That solves the Capitol Mall problem. That solves the commercial area with Sioux Drive right below it. And I can think of all sorts of instances in other wards, but those are two I can think of in our ward. How can we resolve the problems in these mixed neighborhoods?
If I knew that, I'd go on a speaking tour.
Because if we -- if we've had these complaints, you know, the complaints aren't going to stop because we have basically measured this sound at 79 decibels at the right distance, and the ordinance is set at 80. We're not addressing the issue of the complaint.
I guess it would depend -- if we're speaking about mixed-use areas, essentially what would happen is the council would be saying that in that area, if it's commercial, mixed-use or not, if it's zone commercial, then the city will only enforce it if it's 80 or above. That would not help the person complaining that 79 is too loud, but it would remove the police department from that equation.
Got it. So they will essentially -- well, will they go out and measure the sound?
The police would upon complaint.
The accusation that -- this next question, that there are differences from P and Z, can you --
Sure.
-- tell us about that?
There definitely are differences from P and Z, partly because P and Z requested those changes. And I'm pretty sure at least one of them was from Ms. Mullins when we talked about the injunctive relief.
Right.
But while it's true that it went through P and Z, P and Z, their job was to opine on the change in the zoning code, which they did, which just eliminates it. There's no liability at all from changing it from P and Z. We went through many iterations, you know. I -- Roger and I started out this bill months ago, had some contact, I think, with Mr. Bray and made some changes with Councilman Bray, had some discussions with HBA and made some changes for them, had some discussions with Mr. Brownstein, had some changes from there. And so it's gone through many iterations. This is certainly not the one -- this is not exactly what P and Z saw, although they're the ones that made some suggestions, changes along with Mr. Brownstein. And if maybe there was another change, I don't recall exactly, but it's the evolution of the bill, and there could still be some more changes yet before you vote.
And those changes are common, right, Drew? I mean, not necessarily everything that comes out of P and Z is the way we always see it.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Now, most of the time, they're changing zoning and such, so it's not that big a deal. They don't change too many ordinances, but occasionally when it does, sure.
Okay. Dr. Pope, follow-up.
And this will be -- this ordinance would be as simple to amend as any other ordinance? Decibel levels could be changed? The issue of the engine brakes could be changed? Any -- it can be altered?
Absolutely. One, you know, if this is too high, and the council chooses to not change it tonight, you can come back next meeting and change it or the meeting after that if you so desire.
Okay.
Okay. Any other debate by council members? Bob?
First of all, I agree with Dr. Pope. I don't think enacting the ordinance is necessarily going to stop the complaints because if people aren't -- if people perceive that something is too loud, it's certainly within their purview to make a complaint, even if the police go out and determine that it doesn't violate the ordinance. I guess a question that I have is, at what point does someone -- is there any violation if someone consistently complains, and you consistently go out and find that it doesn't violate the ordinance? Is there some point where that becomes a problem? And I guess I would direct that at the chief, or maybe at Drew.
Is the question, do we have an alternative? If we continually have unsubstantiated complaints, what might we do?
That's my question.
I'm not aware of an alternative. We respond to all allegations of law violations, and I don't want to be placed in a position where we would arbitrarily select to what we respond and to what we do not respond. So that would just become probably an accepted burden unless a provision is written.
Okay. I guess the other question I had, I received an email today from an individual who -- well, he initially sent me some excerpts from the noise ordinance in Kansas City, and then he followed up with excerpts from noise ordinance in New York, New York City. And I was intrigued by the ordinance in New York City whereby they measure indoors in the residence of the complainant. So if someone next door to the noise is not bothered by the noise, but someone three blocks down who complains, they measure at that point indoors. And maybe that's just adding further complication to this ordinance, but that intrigued me that you would do that, and I could see where the measurement would be substantially different. And of course, the standard would have to be different as well. I think their standard for indoors by the complainant's about 45 decibels, which is probably significantly lower than what we would -- what we're trying to arrive at now. But I would be interested in knowing how that might -- how that might affect enforcement of the ordinance and also the practicality of trying to enforce the ordinance.
Drew?
I could kind of answer that and maybe address one other question. You know, we specifically debated that, where to measure it from, and we kind of went with five feet from the property line because we felt like that was probably the loudest point the music would be. And so at the point where you're at the loudest, unless there's some really reflective thing going on, the sound will dissipate further as you go down the line. So you could measure from inside, and we put in here that you could measure from the point of complaint because perhaps there's some science going on there where it wouldn't. But what we felt like is, yeah, this is an upper level of noise, and so we don't want it to be any louder than that, you know, with the exception of the variance. So we got -- we felt like at that higher level, that's as high as it ought to ever be going forward. Now, we did allow for the variance, and maybe that ought to come out. I've heard some discussion about that, and I can live with that. But I just wanted to point out that that was actually specifically -- we felt like that was the best place to go because any place further, it's going to be softer. It should never be any louder than that anywhere else.
Okay. Carrie?
Thank you. I agree with Councilman Bray that our current ordinance is outdated, and this is definitely a step in the right direction. It gives us objective measurable standards. Drew has looked at many cities to draft this. He listed an extensive list of cities, and this is very complex, but noise is noise, and we can learn from other communities who've been successful. And we'll also have a chance to see if anything needs to be adapted for our community to make it work better. But it's definitely a step in the right direction. With Drew's work and research, and Roger Schwartz going out and measuring and coming up with these standards, I think it's a good place to start and update. And I would ask if Chief Schrader could simply monitor this with his police department and see what the issues might be in enforcement and any kind of issues at all that we would definitely want to bring it possibly to public safety and address those as soon as anything arises, anything with enforcement or issues at all, to bring that forward. So I would say at least this is a step forward, but like Drew said, it can definitely be changed and adapted as we get it implemented. So I would just ask chief to keep us informed if there's any issues at all so we can address those quickly. Thank you.
Go ahead, chief.
Well, I can't help but feel that this discussion and other discussions demonstrate the difficulty of enforcing it, quite frankly. And I have a number of questions regarding the application of this ordinance. And I think that those questions would begin immediately. In fact, even Drew's comment on the adjacent zoning districts, it says the source of the noise, from where the noise is emanating. So does that mean, for instance, that after 10 o'clock, it's 80 decibels or 55 decibels because the complainant is in a residential area, but the source of the emanating noise is in a commercial area? That's just one example. And I think we're just going to have difficulty the way it is. I think everybody's well-intentioned, but the officers are the ones that are going to have to apply this ordinance, and I think we're going to have some difficulty the way it is. And I don't have, you know, all the solutions. I don't think I've heard anybody that claims they do, but there are still several remaining questions.
Chief, isn't that the case with a lot of ordinances we pass?
No, actually, I don't think so.
Okay.
I just don't think so. This one's somewhat unique.
Okay. Bob?
Chief, I asked you a question in our pre-meeting Thursday, I think it was, and you answered it, and I felt a little bit like maybe I should have followed up because I wasn't certain. So I'm going to ask a more direct question today. In your mind, would it be easier for the police force to enforce the ordinance as it is currently written and currently in place than the ordinance that we're proposing?
It's a good question.
I know it puts you in a difficult spot, but...
There's no question that the present ordinance is too general. It provides for a lot of discretion. Now, that's not always -- that's not all bad. We respond. Most of the time, the noise or the source of the noise is gone. We ask for compliance. Almost all the time, the people comply. End of story. Everybody's relatively happy. This ordinance, as proposed, is more explicit, but with that accompanies a lot of other One wouldn't necessarily have the number of those questions if it's generally written, and one can apply it as one thinks the intent is. Trying to be so specific creates some difficulty for us because we're trying to answer all the questions, and that can't be done in an ordinance. And that's what I expressed last Thursday, I think, too. And in our efforts to please everyone, I'm not sure we're going to accomplish that. And through trial and error, we might be able to demonstrate those difficulties that I anticipate. But I just think that in deference to Drew, he's put a lot of work into it, it's a much better ordinance, but it's going to be -- it's going to be difficult to enforce unless additional definitions are provided us as to what the true intent of some of these sections are.
Did you get your answer, Bob?
I think so.
Okay.
It's a difficult question, and it's a difficult answer, and I feel like you maybe had as much trouble answering that as we're having trying to figure this out, and I understand why. Here, I've made this comment before, something similar, and I'm going to make it again. I really, really appreciate all the work that's went into this, and I definitely appreciate the intent that is behind it. And I do think there needs to be an improvement. But I am of the opinion that in order to try to satisfy both parties, one or the other is going to be disappointed because part of the people testifying tonight want to eliminate the noise, and that's what they see it as. Outdoor performances are nothing more than irritant and noise. And the other parties are looking at it as a commercial venture that where they're providing a service that people want to have. And so if you -- I don't know how we can judge what that number is going to be. I mean, if we went out and we did a sound test, and we found a number that was within the limits of what the band was playing at, then all we've done is validate that the band can play that loud. If we go out and we find out what it is that the neighborhood thinks is low enough, then all we've done is validate that the band can't play louder than what they want it to play. And I don't know how we arrive at the compromise in between. So as much as I appreciate the work's been done, I'm probably going to vote against this ordinance just because I don't think it answers the questions we're trying to answer. And that's -- I mean, that's the conclusion I've come to.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Larry?
And I kind of side with chief on this in that my biggest concern is from the law enforcement aspect of it and trying to get them to come out and enforce this ordinance. As you look at that neighborhood specifically, I mean, you've got the businesses right there. You've got the residents right there, basically on top of each -- well, I don't want to say on top of each other literally, but I mean, they're right there, very close to one another. To get law enforcement to come out there and try to figure out citations and that sort of thing, trying to enforce that, that's going to be a difficult task for them. I was of the opinion of wanting to vote on this and get it over with tonight. I'm not very sure if I'm at that point right now.
Mr. Loubert?
I'd like to sort of put out, you know, a comment or an idea, and maybe Chief Schrader would want to respond, or maybe Captain Senova even. It occurs to me that if this ordinance were in effect, and an officer in the middle of the night got a complaint that there was noise, it strikes me that he would go out and determine, yes, there was some noise, and he would attempt to go to the source and probably to talk to the people who are creating the noise and ask them to shut it down, just like he would if this ordinance wasn't in place. And so it kind of makes me wonder, I mean, and maybe Chief Schrader would want to jump in on that one, and then I'll go a little further.
Yes, I mean, we -- one of our objectives is to be responsive to community standards. So if it's acceptable to the community, then I would -- I mean, I suggest that that's what we would continue to do, allow an individual or a business to comply. And if they don't, then a lot of those difficulties come into play. If they do comply, then we have no more issues. We hope that resolution lasts beyond that particular time. It may not, but I don't foresee us just starting to issue citations. I mean, we certainly could, but a big part of our job is discretion and look at things from a gray perspective, and I would like to think we could do that here. If I might, I could offer another specific, though. For instance, our officers don't have zoning district maps. We won't know -- I wouldn't have known that Mr. Brownstein lives in the commercial area if I had not been told after I asked. To me, it looks like conflicting zones are zoning districts, and in fact, no, if there's continuity there, I don't understand it, but that's what it is. And at 2:00 in the morning, zone officers won't have that information and won't be able to apply that part of it, I don't think, with any sense of accuracy. They can take a shot at it, but they may be wrong, and we don't want to be issued citations in error. That's probably a worse problem. So I would like to think Councilman's speculation would be true, that that's what we -- and that would be accepted within the community. But of course, we have to anticipate the use of the ordinance. That's where I think the problem is. We can still allow people an opportunity to comply. If they don't, then we're back to where we are here.
Chief, I have a question. Could this ordinance be a starting point for what we need to do as a city as far as noise ordinance?
Yes, sir. I think it is. I think with maybe additional dialogue, and we can --
Because there's a lot of things --
-- we can come up with another example.
There's obviously a lot of things that you will see, your officers will see, that we won't see. That happens with any ordinance that we pass. And I think we need to ask ourselves as a council and as a city, if we don't have the right answer as a council on what the level is, then who does?
And Mr. Mayor, that's my point with the officers. I -- part of my role is to advocate for them, and I think --
Right.
-- right now, as is, we're putting them in a difficult position.
Okay. Any other comments? Dr. Pope?
This process was initiated in the Administrative Committee because we had done so much earlier with the Old Town ordinances and festival districts and so forth and so on. I think we need to think about any time we pass an ordinance, that we ask our police department to enforce. The majority of the ordinances we pass, the police department has nothing to do with. But when we pass an ordinance, when we consider an ordinance that we're asking the police department to enforce, their input has to be a large part of the process of developing the ordinance. And there are some questions with this one, and I would hope we could just wait a while and consider some of these aspects. We all want to move in a positive direction, but we can't let our officers be the guinea pigs of our not knowing the right way to proceed, and that's what I'm concerned about, just simply putting officers in a position that even their chief is unsure about.
Any other comment? Carrie?
The difficult thing is, which is the more difficult position for the officers? The current ordinance or this one? Which is better? Is it better to pass this tonight and evolve after we have some input on how they're enforcing it? I mean, currently, they don't have anything -- I guess I'm addressing that to chief there. Currently, they don't have any standards. This simply put measurable standards in place that could help the officer by having a standard in place. So which is better?
I would rather not enact or be responsible for enforcing an ordinance that, to me, is offer some confusing points. Until there's some clarity, I think we're more sensitive to this issue because we've heard so much about it, and we would try to take extra care when we respond to these calls in the meantime, trying to be fair to both parties, if you will. There's generally two parties to these situations. And utilize this as a springboard to improving the existing ordinance or to adopting the proposed ordinance with some revisions or, as I said, added clarity. If we just adopt it as is, then everything I've said stands.
Drew?
I'd be glad if the council wanted to table it. Chief and I can talk, and Roger and Janice, and come back and see if we can come back with a more unified product, if that's what you all would like us to do.
Debate. Ralph, you're the sponsor.
Yes. I think it'd be appropriate to place this on the informal calendar, mayor.
Okay. Any -- see, I think it takes two people not to do that. Anyone have a problem with doing that that's here this evening? Saying none, it'll be on the informal calendar until further notice. And with that, we will take a five-minute break. Thank you. It's always good to see you, Mr. Steinman. Out here at City Hall, those are obviously listed here. If you would like to be a member of one of our boards or commissions, you can do so by going to our city website. Next, we have council committee reports. First of all, will be, I wanna delay, she's coming, Councilwoman Carrie Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we do the committee reports, we do have a couple people who have been waiting patiently that are just a slight bit farther on the agenda.
And they're coming up here in just a second. Why don't you just do your report right quick, and then we'll get right to everything.
All right. Administration Committee, our next meeting is Wednesday, October 24th at 8:00 a.m. We'll discuss the primary election, CVB contract, and appointments. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. On finance, Sean Schulte.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee actually met prior to this meeting, had a special meeting to discuss a contract between the County of Cole and the City of Jefferson for services the Collector's Office provides for the city. I'd like to report on the sales tax revenues. The city received the October 1% sales tax, and the amount is $769,000, which is $136,000 less than projected for October. So, year-to-date, which is our fiscal year-end, on the 1% general sales tax, we're $32,036 above budget, projected.
Okay.
And our next meeting is next Tuesday, October 23rd, 7:30 a.m. across the hall.
All right, thank you, Sean. Moving on to public safety, Dr. Brian Pope.
Short report, we have not met since the last council meeting. Our next meeting will be following the prep meeting on November 1st.
All right, and Brian, while we're there, I know you also have a liaison report on the USS Jefferson City.
Right. I'd like to, on behalf of the USS Jefferson City Submarine Committee, invite everyone in the community to the 20th anniversary of the boat's commissioning this Friday at 6:00 p.m. at Capital Ritz. This week, the captain and eight of his crew will be here in Jefferson City. It should be a very good week, they've got a lot of activities planned for them. I think this is really interesting. Of the eight crew members, Petty Officer Sturm is along, and his job on the ship is the ship's noise reduction officer.
Timing could not be better.
Six o'clock, a Friday evening at Capital Ritz, and you can go on the city website to get any other information.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pope. Moving on to public works and planning, Mr. Scribner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We haven't had a meeting since our last council meeting, but we will be having a meeting on Thursday, October the 18th, 2012, 7:30 a.m. across the hall. We've got several items, a new business, one is a request to reconsider previous denial of a permissive use for signage, a permit. Also, request for sidewalks on South Ridge Drive, design contract change order for Hazleton Pump Station and Coal Junction Pump Station, Autumn Lane-Dix Road change order, animal shelter consultant contract change order, and supplemental appropriation, cemetery maintenance contract bids, posting construction wet weather overflows, proposed infrastructure project priorities for general revenue fund, report on past uses of CDBG funds, proposed bicycle loop plan, waiver of sidewalk construction on East McCarty Street Project, and report from the Planning Protective Services monthly reports. Gonna have a full agenda again. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other liaison reports? Seeing none. Next, we have on the agenda, a new person to JCTV, Mr. Jeff Bassensen. This point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Next, we have presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. The Honorable Dwayne Schreman and Kathy Harness, here to talk to us about a proposed annexation. Dwayne, welcome. As you know, sometimes these can get a little lengthy.
It actually is, it actually is interesting, and I, you know, I thank you guys for the service that you do, because I don't think a lot of folks understand the time that you put in. The other thing I wanna tell you too, Cardinals are losing one to nothing right now, going into the bottom of the second. As the mayor indicated, I'm Dwayne Schreman, and with me...
I'm Kathy Harness.
And we are here to speak in favor of and to encourage the citizens of the community to vote yes on the annexation. The annexation is on the ballot November 6th, and that is gonna be, as you know, a huge turnout. There are gonna be lots of issues people are gonna be concerned about, a lot more concerned about that than they're gonna be concerned about annexation. But, as far as this community is concerned, this is a very important issue, and we wanna encourage all city voters, and I'm here really to try to talk mostly to city voters and city residents. Obviously, I'm a former mayor, so I speak from the perspective of the city. This is something we're asking all city voters to please vote yes on this. Kathy, with me, actually lives in the area that's proposed for annexation, and Kathy will talk to you briefly about why it's important for those citizens likewise to vote yes on this. We're displaying, as you can see on the screens, the areas that is proposed for annexation. And a couple of points to make. One, annexation is important to this community, because if we are to continue to thrive, we must continue to grow. And it is reasonable, I think, to expect those businesses and those folks who are advantaged by being close to Jefferson City, it is reasonable, I think, to expect that those folks also would become a part of the city, and necessarily would pay taxes that go along with being part of the city. The benefits to these areas, obviously, I think, a prime benefit right now, you can see, is what's happening here tonight. The protection that this council and city ordinances provide to property. The sound ordinance is a prime example. Those kinds of protections are what the city provides to folks that come in. Two very important protections, I think, the city provides is a professional 24-hour fire department. The fire department is well-staffed, well-equipped, and is one of the huge benefits, and one of the huge services that is provided by being in the city. Secondly, the full-time police department with Chief Schrader's men. That also, I think, is an enormous benefit to being in the city. Right now, I think that this proposal is like 169 acres. Of that amount, I think probably around 55, if I'm correct, is highway right-of-way. And so, obviously, that's, people don't care if that comes in. I'll let Kathy talk a little bit about the subdivision in which she lives, but you can see there's a problem in the subdivision that Kathy lives in. If you drive down the street, you're in the city, then you're out of the city, and then you're back in the city. And so, this is an opportunity to fill in some of the blanks, to make this area contiguous. This is no detriment whatsoever to city residents. There is no reason you, as a city resident, should not support this annexation, because it allows the city to continue to increase its tax base, it allows the city to continue to control in a reasonable manner what our city is gonna look like. Once these areas come in, they're subject to zoning restrictions, and we are able to make sure that these areas grow and develop in a manner that is consistent with the current city, and in a way that we want this to grow. So, please, from the perspective of those citizens out there that are watching, it is in your benefit, and we're asking you to please vote yes on this on Tuesday, November 6th. Kathy, I've said a lot, go ahead.
That's fine, and I won't repeat the things that Dwayne said, but I fully support his comments. I think it is in the best interest of the city, and I, although I'm not actually a resident of the city, I would like, I very much want to be, and I support the economic development that would, you know, that would come along with it. I think this, I want the city to grow. It's my home, and I like living here, and I wanna be part of it. Like Dwayne said, when I drive into my neighborhood, I drive into this, I pull in and I'm on a city street. When I drive into where my particular court, my street, it is not in the city limit, there are two streets there, and then a short, I think, I don't know if there's probably five houses there that also are on Turnberry, that are not in the city. It's very confusing to me, I did not know that I was not in the city limit when I first moved there. I was disappointed, shame on me for not knowing that. But, I'm very interested in the expanded services of the city, of the fire department, the police department, for the, just even the recycling part of it. We, you know, we don't get to take advantage of that, and I think that's a very important part, particularly for me. I know when I was here last time, I talked a little bit about, we had a meeting of, and invited all the neighbors. Obviously, not all of them came, but a great number of them came. I did not ever hear anybody voice any objection or opposition to the annexation. Obviously, when the vote happened in August, there was some. I have not been able to identify one person who has said that they voted against it. Anybody I've talked to have said they supported it, or they just didn't vote. So, you know, I don't know. I am going to write a letter to all of the residents in the area that are under the proposed annexation, and hopefully, maybe I can get, I'll get some feedback from them, which maybe we can address their concerns at that time. Thank you very much.
All right, any questions for our guest tonight? Carrie?
Thank you, Kathy, for your enthusiasm to be part of the city, and this would be the fourth ward, so Bill Loubert and I, the council representatives there, and I know this is such a part of town where the growth is really heading out west, and it is so close. As you said, you drive through the city going to and from your, where you live, and it's just, it's so close to the development, it only makes natural sense to be part of it. So, thank you, Dwayne and Kathy, for your enthusiasm and comments tonight. Thank you.
Sure. And I'm not, I personally am not interested in just my, you know, the little bit of area in our neighborhood. I support, you know, the other, the expanded areas, the hotels, the furniture store. I do think that they reap, you know, benefits from being near the city, and I think it would be, you know, I think it's just good sense for them to join us.
Kathy and Dwayne, thank you very much for your time tonight and for being here. We definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have announcements by the mayor, council, and staff. Number 11, any announcements? Moving on to number 12, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. I have two people signed up. First of all, is Brandon, coming with your last name, Brandon?
Swires.
Swires. So, your daughter's not here tonight, right?
She's not here.
All right. Welcome again.
Thank you. Just real quick, I wanted to, we're talking, 719 West High, Brandon Swires, here in Jefferson City. We were talking about the proposed ordinance to make the west side of Norman Drive not, no parking. We talked, last time I passed out the little maps, that showed the, kind of the compromise that we had worked out with FedEx, with the cones, and I noticed someone last week was out there, speaking with FedEx, I don't know who it was, but somebody from the city was out there, looking at the cones, and it's been working. We have not had any knocks on the door from FedEx, saying, we're having issues, we can't get our trucks in. As you know, my concerns were the, there's no street lighting, there's no sidewalk, and if the 10 to 12 spots on the west side are taken away, they're gonna have to continue to park, they're gonna go further up the street, which in my opinion, would put people parking right in front of FedEx. So, I don't know how that would actually make it easier to get a truck into the FedEx docks. They're just moving the cars from one side to the other, so the truck would still be squeezed, I mean, you're not taking the streets off, the cars off the street. There's a lot of traffic up and down, specifically out of Norman Drive, in the mornings as the buses are leaving. It's very, very dark, like you said, no street lighting, no walking paths, no sidewalks. So, our concern is all the volume of buses, with the people having, the staff having to walk down the hill, either on the property of FedEx, or on the grass, or out on the street on the other side of their car, as buses and other vehicles are passing by them. What, I think, was it you that was out with FedEx? Were you out there? Was there any kind of specific concerns or complaints that they had about the way the cones were? I mean, what, kind of what?
Excuse me, excuse me, sir, you can't ask questions of staff.
I can't.
Sorry.
I wish I could. That's all I have.
Maybe a councilman might.
Maybe, that'd be great if...
Are you done with your comments?
I'm done.
Okay. Any other questions here for Brandon? Bob?
Have you had conversation, I mean, they're not here to represent their position, but have you had conversation with them in regard to whether that's acceptable or not?
Well, what is more important is the lack of conversation we've had. Since we've put the cones up, we have not, they have not come back to our office and said, you know, can you get this driver to move their vehicle? Can you get this driver to move his truck, or whatever?
And they were before.
They were before, yes. They were multiple times a week. Since the cones have been placed, they have not. And I've seen them, they've even brought the big truck back, the tractor-trailer, and it's been able to back in. So, I haven't had specific conversations, but I've been told that the map that I brought, that I designed, was very similar, if not exact, to what they suggested. So, the placement of the cones is representative of the areas that were no parking on my little drawing.
So, you're, so where you have them placed now is what you're, what you're asking us to enact as a no parking?
As no parking, as opposed to the entire west side.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Rick?
I was one of the ones that was out there also. I was out there on business, and I was also talking to the manager over at FedEx, and he is okay with whatever proposal the city decides to do. He is, whatever the city decides, whatever's best, he's willing to go with. But he did also have a suggestion that he had heard from the owners of the mini storage down the street, that they have a little lot down there, and they said they're willing to let you guys rent that lot. And I didn't know if either, anybody from your organization has approached them to maybe find out if it's okay to park on it?
I was not aware of that. Our manager's here, he's also...
Yeah, that was from the manager over at FedEx, so you guys might wanna get with him to find out who that was, 'cause he said that they were very emphatic about you guys being able to park on that, so...
Any other questions of Brandon? Brandon, thanks for being here tonight. Next up, Frank Underwood. Welcome, Frank.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Mr. Prather was out there the other day, and that was news to me, hearing the owner of the storage people allowing us, I would be more than...
Frank, for the record, could you please state your address, please?
Yeah, Frank Underwood, and I'm 106 Folklerson.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. And so, I will talk to him about, he did come down and talk to us about people that were just parking there, and said, absolutely not, you know, I don't want people parking over there. Okay, that wasn't an issue, and trying to keep people not parking on that street on the west side, where FedEx needs the truck to come down, has been a challenge, just announcing over the radio, talking to the employees, they just pull in there and park. So, what we did is set up, establish some cones for the large trucks to come down, back in, and it has worked with him, trying to be a good neighbor with him, you know, put up the cones for a few weeks, try to take them down so that they're not out in the street continuous, people come back in and park. And so, we've just left the cones out there, and so far, it's worked fine. I've allowed their trucks, and especially in the wintertime, because when they pull down in there to back up the hill into that spot is almost impossible with the way the street gets with the ice and snow, so I've agreed with him, you know, when they have their large trucks to come down to our bus lot, turn around in the bus lot, and then go back up the hill, and that way, they're backing down the hill into the spot, and makes it a lot safer for the truck, and makes it, you know, for them to be able to do it. FedEx proposed, or it's very similar to what the drawing he had, the manager there and myself had talked about what should be no parking there, and it was at, I believe it's about 18 feet off of the west end on Norman, from the driveway going into the, into the storage place, and then about eight feet or whatever from the corner there where the truck needs to make into FedEx. That was fine, that's where we established the cones and set them up. They proposed, you know, just that, and I believe staff came back and said, no, we don't segment, no parking spots. Well, that's fine, I can agree with that as well, but what I don't agree with is that, you know, this was the proposal of FedEx, this is what we would like to see, you know, tell them no. You know, don't say, well, okay, we're just gonna do the whole west end just to make it easy. And let's, you know, they asked... And let's, let's, you know, they asked for this specifically, I agree with that, that's not a problem. By eliminating all that west end, we've got people, you know, citizens of this, of the city parking up the whole east end of Norman Drive and then walking down that in, in the dark in the mornings, and in mornings, our buses are, are staggered. In the evenings, it's not an issue. In the mornings, it would be an issue because they would be walking down the street with traffic coming out of there, approximately 71 buses coming out of there in the morning between, what, 5:50 and 7:00. And so with the staggered arrival time of the staff, that creates a very unsafe situation for, I would say, approximately 20, 21 of them that are parking on that east side. You know, we, we haven't had any, thank goodness, accidents in, in, on Norman, or had any issues of congestion where we needed to have a west end of it, of no parking. And I believe that we've been good neighbors with FedEx and tried to accommodate their needs as well, you know, us with, you know, them with us as well. I just, I just really think it would create more of an unsafe situation for the people coming to work there and kind of a bad process for them. That's pretty much all I have.
All right, thank you, Frank. Any questions of Mr. Underwood? All right, thank you for being here.
No problem.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. It's been moved in seconded, discussion. Roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to number 14, bids over $50,000. Bid 2637. This point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
I got, who's my second, Rick, and Carrie was first. Discussion by staff. Any comments, Chief? Debate by council, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.